There you go. Whenever you're ready, okay. We will call to order the March 2022 meeting of the Sycamore Township Zoning Commission. My name is Roger Friedman, the chairman, and I would ask Mr. Meese to take the roll call.
Sure.
Mr. Swanson here. Ms. Flanagan here. Mr. Friedman.
President.
Mr. Ruse. I'm here as well.
Okay, good. Before we get started, if anyone in the audience has their cell phones with them turned on, I'd ask that you turn the sound off or turn the, uh, turn it off completely or put it on vibrate so that we're not interrupted by phone calls. First item on the agenda is the approval in minutes from the November 8th, 2021 meeting. Anyone have any changes that they haven't already identified and handed in?
I'm coming.
Okay. The motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Second, second, I'm a sliding in, all in favor?
All right.
Okay, the minutes are approved. Nothing on old business. Moving on to new business, the first item on the agenda for tonight is case number 2022-01P2. The applicant is Leesman Engineering for Tire Discounters, and the property is located at 7369 and 7381 Kenwood Road. And the request is for a PUD2. Skyler, if you would give us an update on that?
Yes, sir. Okay, as we stated, case number 2022-01P2, applicant Tire Discounters is proposing to redevelop their site along with recently acquired former Grader site immediately south of their, uh, their current location. This is a expansion of the existing use that is, uh, the Tire Discounters has been operating for several years on the site. Let's see, and this is, let me. If I can change pages here. Okay, uh, the site is, uh, is sitting on the, uh, the west side of Kenwood Road, generally south of, uh, generally south of the, uh, the Montgomery Road, Kenwood Road intersection, uh, several lots down. It is, uh, it is actually, I, I would say essentially located along the, uh, Kenwood Corridor in the SPI overlay district. It is surrounded, uh, to the north, south, and east by E Retail. Uh, and to the west is, uh, the planned retail development, uh, where Trader Joe's is, uh, which is also part of the SPI overlay. Uh, the total new site is, uh, just over, uh, one acre, uh, with a, uh, net acreage of .892. It has, uh, approximately 225 feet of road frontage along Kenwood Road, uh, generally flat, slightly sloping, uh, down toward Kenwood Road, you know, just, uh, just by a couple of feet. Existing ISR for both sites is, uh, 92.4% uh, with, uh, the, uh, the redeveloped site being proposed at 86.1. All right, this is current situation of, uh, both properties. North being to the right, uh, in this orientation, uh, the Tire Discounter site is on the, uh, the north side of the site with the, uh, the old Grader's building immediately south and adjacent. Uh, you'll notice on here, there's actually multiple, uh, curb cuts onto, uh, Kenwood Road, uh, to our Tire Discounter, and then pretty much this, this open, uh, open curb cutter, open frontage along Grader's, uh, with secondary access on to American Way, uh, the cul-de-sac behind that was, um, that was installed a few years back. Tire Discounters proposing to consolidate, uh, the two lots, uh, raise both buildings. Uh, so this is a full redevelopment of both sites. Uh, they're proposing a, uh, new floor plan, new building, uh, that, that's typical of, of more modern Tire Discounter sites. Uh, this is, uh, generally situated on the, uh, the far west side of the property line or the property, uh, with it only sitting about three feet from that, from that western edge. Uh, curb cuts are reduced, uh, to, uh, a single access point on, um, on Kenwood Road, uh, with that secondary access point, uh, directed back on to American Way. Uh, as you can see, the site is just generally sloping from, from west to east, but it's, it is, uh, a generally level site. Uh, there is, uh, proposed some retaining walls, um, both along Kenwood Road and to the north side of the site, uh, where it's bounded by the, uh, the access drive for the, uh, the larger site back here where Trader Joe's is. Uh, immediately, it should be mentioned, uh, immediately adjacent to the, to the west property line is the, uh, is the Trader Joe's, uh, docking loading area. There's really, there's really not, uh, public access back here. Some preliminary storm calculations have, uh, been performed, uh, performed. Uh, this is under review with, uh, county agencies, uh, and there is sufficient area for proposed underground detention. Photometric plan has been submitted with this. This is actually a revised photometric plan. Uh, the, the overall goal is to, uh, to achieve, uh, .5 foot candles at the property lines. Uh, for the most part, this site does achieve that, uh, with a slight increase along the southern edge, uh, which would bleed over into the, uh, the Tzatziki's, uh, parking lot area. So no, no, uh, concerns by staff, uh, from, from that standpoint. A landscaping plan has been submitted as part of this application. Uh, this landscaping plan, uh, does, uh, meet and exceed in certain areas the landscaping requirements that are provided in, uh, chapter 14 of, uh, our zoning resolution, uh, for both boundary and, uh, and streetscape. With the exception of that western property line, uh, the, uh, one issue that we need to talk about tonight is the setback from the, uh, uh, from that rear yard. So typically we have a, uh, believe it's 20-foot, uh, rear yard, uh, setback requirement. This is a very tight site, very shallow, uh, between, uh, Kenwood Road and the, uh, the back edge of this property. With loading dock here, the, uh, the applicant has designed this site to try and maximize usage of the site for parking and landscaping, uh, so this is, this is backed up pretty significantly. So there would be no landscaping along the rear, um, and obviously there would be that encroachment to the, into the rear yard. All other setbacks are, are compliant. Just additional streetscape calculations. Uh, here's general floor plan of the site. Uh, this would be, uh, o- over to the north side would be the general, uh, so showroom, uh, customer service area. Uh, there are eight bays proposed at this site, uh, with storage along the, uh, uh, west and, uh, south portions of the building. There would also be an exterior, um, exterior dumpster and, uh, entire, um, area that would be essentially incorporated into the, uh, to the building. That is block matching with the same facade. Just a better graphic representation of the photometric plan, one second. Same here. All right, proposed signage. Uh, Tire Discounters is proposing, uh, three wall signs for, uh, for this site. Each, uh, each sign is proposed to be, uh, 128.67 square feet, uh, for a total of 386.01 square feet. Uh, the zoning resolution does allow for a maximum of two signs, uh, with, at a total of 150 square feet. So variance would be required for, um, this sign proposal. Those would be placed on, uh, the, uh, the frontage, uh, of the, the, the main facade facing, uh, facing east, looking out at, uh, Kenwood Road to the north, as well as on the south side of the building. There will, uh, there's also proposed to be a, uh, a freestanding monument sign. Uh, the monument sign, uh, is proposed at, uh, 50 square feet and at a maximum height of eight feet. The overall size of the monument sign is, uh, consistent with zoning resolution. However, the placement is approximately five feet closer to the right of way than we typically allow. So variance would be required for that as well. Just an overall sign detail, again, you have the two wall signs at the, uh, the north and northeast corners of the building, as well as the south here. And the placement of the, uh, uh, the freestanding sign is south of that access, uh, point on the Kenwood Road in this landscaping area, and that is five feet from the, uh, from right of way. It is also five feet from the side yard, uh, setback, which is permissible. Again, we have an elevation of the, the front elevation facing east. Rear of the building facing west. This is the north elevation. And finally, south elevation. Right here's the dumpster, uh, extension to the, to the building. Uh, all outside agency comments, uh, they were submitted. Some were received, some are still under review, uh, as far as township departments. Sycamore Township Road Superintendent, uh, Maintenance Department, uh, did review and discuss this application. They were actually in favor of this because of the reduction in, uh, Kenwood, uh, Kenwood Road access points, as well as the utilization of, uh, of American Way, uh, which, which is why they installed the, you know, the, uh, the secondary street. So, um, they're, they're glad to see, see use of the site as this redevelops. Let's see, uh, no concerns with fire department. Uh, there, uh, there is, uh, hydrant availability already within, within the area. If there's any additional, uh, improvements that need to be abandoned to this site, there's opportunities through, through that review process. So. Uh, so on the whole, uh, staff is generally favorable to the applicant's proposal. The revised middle reduces the size and placement of, uh, of a freestanding sign, reduces light spillage, and provides for appropriate site landscaping. Due to the size of the former Grader site, future development was expected to be problematic. The consolidation of the two lots is a logical and reasonable development opportunity along a major corridor. The development plan also removes a legal non-conforming billboard. Uh, with that being said, should the zoning commission recommend approval to the board trustees, staff makes the following, uh, suggestions for conditions. One, existing lot shall be consolidated prior to zoning compliance plan approval. Two, site shall not be utilized for telecommunication towers in the future. That's just a standard that we're going to start incorporating. Number three, site should not be used for off-site advertising signs in the future. Another standard. Uh, four, a variant shall be granted for building setback as part of the PUD2 approval. Five, a variant shall be granted for sign setback as part of the PUD2 approval, uh, should that be considered. Six, a variant shall be granted for outdoor lighting intensity per photometric plan as part of this PUD2 approval. That's for the, uh, little bit of spilling of rented Tzatziki's. Number seven, a variant shall be granted for building signage area and count as part of this PUD approval. Zoning commission shall make a recommendation for total number and maximum area of signage appropriate for approval. And eight, all provisions of chapter 13 signs shall remain in effect, unless otherwise noted. Okay, any questions, sir?
Do you have a picture of the current freestanding sign?
I do not have that on me, but, uh, Google Maps will, one second.
And is the current one, it's not within the, it's back at 10 feet from the right of way?
Uh, so they're not actually utilizing any of the existing signs. None of the existing signs on the site are actually, uh, conforming to, to current standards. So they're all pylon signs.
Okay.
Both for Graders and, and Tire Discounters. Let's see here. And then I did, I did mention it in the notes, but it should be, uh, on the actual Grader site. We do have that very large, uh, billboard, yeah. So that's been, um, a point of contention for, for quite some time. So. Okay, if we can get all this stuff off of here. All right, so just, just south of the two existing sites. Yep. So billboard, actually, so the Graders, that's going to be right at the back of, uh, of the sidewalks you're looking at within just, uh, a foot or two of, of right of way for Graders. And then you're looking at Tire Discounters being a little further back at the pylon, but because it's, it's got that overhang, it's going to be close to the property line as well.
So both of those signs are planned to come down?
Both of those are planned to come down, yes, sir. There would be a new placement. So you're looking at that, that southern property line, it, there'd basically be a, a straight through, um, access point here. So in this, in this buffer yard, you would be looking at the new sign, um, being, being five foot off the property line.
The new building's going to be set farther back, right?
New, yeah, so the new, let me go back to that.
Benefit of having those signs on each end of the building. That must be, uh, much bigger than what we would allow normally. There are benefits of that.
I would certainly ask the applicant to insert it up.
Skyler, is large billboard staying?
No, sir. So, uh, uh, this is just kind of approximate, but you're looking at that billboard kind of roughly being here on this site, uh, as, as part of this, uh, consolidation, raising, raising the site, uh, that billboard is coming down. Yeah, and that was, that was the applicant's proposal from, from day one. So we're just glad to see it come down.
Okay.
Anybody else have any question?
Just my quick ones. The automotive use is a permitted use in this zoning.
So the SPI overlay district does, does add some additional restrictions. Personal services, including, uh, automobile service would be a permissible use with a PUD2. So there's kind of two triggers, uh, here. It's the, uh, it's the SPI overlay and the, uh, the ISR. So that's why we're in front of, uh, zoning commission today with this. This would not be considered a principal permitted use. However, it should be noted, they already have an existing use, and this is simply a, uh, redevelopment and expansion of, of an existing use.
Time, they're going to tie into that back, um, alleyway, the floors that look left back.
So it's not, it's not actually an alleyway, that, yeah, it is a public access. Yeah, it is, um, the, it was the township's intention when, um, yeah, so it was, uh, th- this was a planned, uh, project by the township, uh, to provide for public access, especially when they were, uh, considering the development of the median, uh, with, with Hamilton County, uh, that there would be secondary access to, uh, these, these tighter lots on the west side. It was really considered more of a phase one to access management. Uh, there was a roundabout that was discussed, but has yet to be implemented or, you know, fully planned and designed. But American Way, uh, we actually encourage, um, we encourage all of these lots to, to connect to American Way if possible. Wendy's was invited to do it. It's a, it's a corporate site. They, they really weren't interested in, in changing anything there, which is unfortunate because you see a lot of backup on, on Kenwood Road because of that, but that's, that's a discussion for a different day.
Anything further? Okay, if there is anyone here for the applicant who wishes to speak, if you would come up to the desk up here and give us your name and your affiliation.
I'm Michael Chandler, from Leesman Engineering. I'm the project engineer for this project. I want to thank Skyler for his, the review, for his help throughout this process. We've been developing these plans, uh, for a number of weeks now, and we, and we like our finished product. Tire Discounters is excited about the site, uh, provides them an opportunity to clean it up in their minds, reduce the number of curb cuts on the site, increase the number of bays, um, which ultimately, ultimately allows them to do more work, create more revenue, um, and more parking to, to service a store of this size. I don't have any additional, I have, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, anything, any questions for the app?
I had a question about the signage on the ends of the buildings.
Yes, sir.
Is there any possibility that you could bring them down in size so that you could fall closer to our standard?
So that is something that Tire Discounters has done in the past on other sites, um, but signage is very important to them, um, as a company.
For the, with the building sitting so far back, how much are you going to see those ends?
It's really more. That's a good question. It's really good. It's really critical to see from further back, um, for visibility, uh, for pedestrians. Vehicles coming down Kenwood Road, making the southbound maneuver to see the building, and nowhere, uh, they're headed. Not necessarily visibility from directly in front of the store, but more so further away. Um, in particular, the signage on the south side of the building is extremely critical, um, as is the access on to American Way because the median on Kenwood Road doesn't allow for a left turn, uh, for northbound traffic. So seeing the location, uh, having that visibility from a distance, um, allows customers to know where the site is.
Anything else? Yeah, and to I, same question, Mr. Ruse had, I, quite frankly, really don't see the, the need for three building sites, uh, especially the one on the, uh, the, the north side, coming from Montgomery down Kenwood. Uh, I think you're going to get some blockage from existing buildings there. Uh, you're going to have a monument sign closer to Kenwood Road than it should be, uh, at the driveway into the location. That's going to be more visible than a sign on the side of the building, uh, to someone driving down Kenwood Road. Um, I, I quite frankly think that, that two signs on the building are, are more than sufficient, especially with the monument sign, so. Was more of a comment than a question.
Sure, that's fine. I appreciate it. Uh, we do ask for some consideration to be made, um, for the fact that we are reducing the number of signs on the site from three, including the large billboard, down to one. Although providing three bill, or proposing three, uh, building signs.
Sure. Okay, any other questions or comments? Okay, thank you, sir.
Thanks.
If there's anyone else in the audience who wishes to speak on the application or, or against it, or make any comments, uh, want to come up to the desk and give us your name?
Jory Zola, General Counsel for Tire Discounters, address 200, uh, West Fourth Street, Cincinnati, Ohio, 45202. We've tried to thoroughly work with the township as, uh, best as we could when this, uh, idea first, uh, came to our minds, uh, like I think we tried to take into consideration what, uh, staff has requested of us, what their, their concerns are, and then, uh, also tried to, um, get some consideration of the fact that, uh, I think this redevelopment of, uh, the, the two particular sites is going to be an aesthetic upgrade, um, for, for the township, for ourselves, as well as the reduction in overall number of signs and, uh, sort of obsolete signage, uh, with respect to what the current zoning code allows. So, uh, we're looking forward to it. Hopefully can get this project underway soon.
Okay, anyone have any question? Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Okay, if there are no other questions or comments, anyone care to make a motion with regard to this application? I asked if there anyone else wished to comment.
I do have one question about the ISR. Does that require a variance as well?
Uh, no, sir, that's, that falls within the, uh, the parameters of the period, too.
That's a starting point.
There we go.
We need a motion.
I will.
I think it's going to have to be revised, but for now, just to get us rolling, I'm going to move that we consider 2022-01P2 as considered with the, uh, conditions noted by staff, although I think we're going to have to discuss at least number seven for sure.
And I'll second that with your comments.
Good. Uh, any comments with regard to the recommendation?
I definitely agree with you, Mr. Freeman. On that, I, I don't think that the three signs, I think that's way more than is necessary, especially if we're going to have a freestanding sign there that's already within the right of way. So they're 128 points, something each, which is over.
The total allows typically 150 square feet total.
Yes, sir.
And I mean, so two of them would be 256.
Right. So I'm a little ambivalent on how, uh, whether they have to go back down and make both within 150 feet, but, um, I'm content if we at least reduce it to two feet and the freestanding sign and the, within that right of way, we're designated. That would be my thoughts.
Anyone else?
No, I, I, I echo the same comments. I, I just think it's probably overly signed and they're large signs to begin with. I think their utility of being visible on, on the street is covered by the one on the front and the freestanding sign out front. Direct people where they need to go.
Yeah.
I'd like to see it, I mean, I'd like to see it go back to two signs and, and reduced in size.
Night, meaning the sign on the front and then maybe the sign on the south side.
Personally, whichever, whichever the applicant.
To me, you would rather on the north or south side, wherever they would see the most benefit, but I think it should be two sides. I think if you're northbound on Kenwood, you're on the opposite side of the road. By the time you see the sign on the side of the building faces south, you can't turn left there anyway. Um, so you've missed your opportunity to circle in via American Way. So I'm not really sure if it, for my building, I would.
So I'm not really sure if it, for my building, I would put the sign on the south side. I think it's just the number of signs, I think is important.
I would agree with that comment. I, I think that the, the recommended, um, recommendations that are in the staff report that is, is planning and pointed out, I think number seven should, should be an indication that building signs are limited to, to two building signs and the one monument sign as, uh, requested by, by the applicant. Um, and I leave it up to the applicant where they want to put the building signs, um, they can decide, uh, the north and the south side of the building. I, I also think that the, that the motion should be amended to provide that the billboard sign will definitely come down.
That's, uh, that's actually item number three. The site should not be used for off-site advertising signs. That's, that's our, our resolution speak for, for billboard.
Cause it says in the future, is that problem there?
I, I would just rather have it that the, the conditions that comes down as part of this project.
That's right.
Did you really just write in the future of the solve the problem? Back to the signage, sorry. Are we okay on the size of the signs?
I'm not sure we came to a consensus on that yet, but.
I, I would be comfortable with, with the size, kind of a concession to it, but, uh, yeah, I'd like it a little smaller, but I, I, I can live with the, the, the size that they're proposing.
I am as well. I, I'm a little concerned on the item three, when it says off-site advertising, to me, that could mean that they're talking about some other business, but what would stop them from putting up tire discounters up above on a billboard? It's a little.
That would be so.
That's why I was suggesting.
The, the off-site.
The billboard comes down.
Yeah, the billboard, the billboard does come down.
Okay.
Uh, we can, we can certainly spell that out, so, um, the, the reason for the off-site advertising language is because we don't actually use the term billboard in our zoning code.
Okay.
Um, a billboard, um, and, and I guess lay speak is an off-site advertising sign in our code, so that's why I said we can't have those in the future.
I think I heard you, so I would then move to amend the proposal before us and, um, instead move to consider case 2022 dash zero one P2 with the eight conditions with condition number three adjusted to say site, site shall not be used for billboard slash off-site advertising signs, period. And then seven would be amended to say a variant shall be granted for building signage area and count as part of this PUD two approval. Zoning Commission recommends that the total number of signage, um, building signage would be two and that it can have a variance to be of the size 128.67 square feet. And further recommends that the, uh, the freestanding sign as, uh, set forth in the plan is approved um, and maybe within the five feet, maybe within the five feet of the right of way. I believe that's it. The other conditions remain.
So we're saying the, the 120 square feet per.
Twenty-eight, but only two.
Right, so 257 point, point three total.
I'll resecond.
Okay. With that done, Mr. Meese, you want to take the, uh, vote on that?
Sure. Mr. Swanson.
Hi.
Hi.
Mr. Friedman.
Hi.
Mr. Bruce.
Thank you. That's going to come before the trustees.
That'll be, that'll come before the trustees. Uh, I'm expecting them to set a date for, uh, that public hearing, uh, for their first meeting in April. Is that April 5th, I believe? Let me double check that. Yeah, first Tuesday, first Tuesday in April, so that would be set, uh, sometime prior to regular meeting. Either 5:30 or 6 o'clock on, on April 5th. One trustee has final, final say on all these conditions.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll move on to the next case, which is case number 2022 dash zero four MA. The applicant is Tri Health. Property is located at 8240 North Creek Drive. It's a major adjustment to a PUD.
Yes, sir. Hey, uh, this, uh, thank you, sir. Again, case 2022 dash zero four MA, major adjustment, uh, to PD. Uh, this is the Tri Health Development, uh, located at 8240 North Creek Drive off of, uh, East Galbraith, to the, uh, to the east of, uh, uh, the intersection of Kenwood Road and East Galbraith and, uh, actually sitting just east of, uh, Interstate 71. Uh, let's see here. Current zoning situation, uh, as we stated, this is a, uh, this is a PUD within the, uh, it's actually an SPB within the, uh, the double O Planned Office District, uh, within the SPI overlay district. This is, uh, to the north is, uh, is B dash two, single-family residents. This is a new single-family, uh, PUD, uh, that's actually along Cougar Mill with, uh, 11 single-family lots. We also have, uh, Planned, Planned Office District and Planned Retail to the south. Uh, this property here is owned by, uh, Jewish Hospital, uh, and then across the street you have, uh, Kenwood Town Center. Uh, to the east, this is kind of interesting and I, 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 I actually take issue with our current zoning map on this, so the, uh, the, the zoning district as indicated on the map is B, single-family. That's actually I-71 right of way. So immediately to the, to the east of that, uh, or excuse me, to the west of, of I-71, um, we have, um, gosh, now I gotta think about this. Uh, we have the, uh, the hotel site and then, uh, uh, then the apartment complexes, so. Um, so there's really not any single-family residential immediately, uh, immediately west. And of course, to, to the other east over here, we have single-family homes, uh, fronting on, fronting on Cougar Mill. Yeah, uh, total site is, uh, nine point nine one nine one acres, uh, with a frontage on, uh, uh, East Galbraith of, uh, 237.38 feet. Uh, site is, uh, sloping north to south, uh, from back behind Cougar Mill, uh, down to, down to East Galbraith. Okay, uh, this is actually a fairly minor major adjustment. If you wanna, if you want to play, uh, a little bit of a war game here, so out, out of, out of this whole site development, we're looking at a, a single sign. Uh, this would be a new sign that the applicant is proposing, uh, for visibility along Interstate 71. But because of the, the, the significant increase in the size, it does warrant a major adjustment review. Uh, there is a current sign, you can kind of see in this, this top corner here, it's a, uh, 10-foot-high sign, uh, that is visible from, from I-71. I would assume the applicant will, will argue the, uh, the merit of its visibility. And they are proposing a, a 30-foot replacement, uh, with, uh, with large Tri Health logo and a, um, uh, 64-square-foot LED, uh, message board. Uh, and the message board would read, uh, with, uh, with some pre-programmed messages, uh, that we do have some examples here to show you. Uh, they have also, uh, incorporated, uh, the monument base with a, with a Sycamore Township logo. Uh, I believe the total. Let's see. So, uh, there, there is, there's two, uh, freestanding signs on this, uh, on the site. You do have the, uh, the main sign, uh, that's visible from East Galbraith Road. This is a secondary one along I-71. Um, the zoning resolution does state, uh, that they would be permitted one freestanding sign, uh, not to exceed 64 square feet in surface area. Obviously, the two existing signs are approved as part of that original, uh, PUD plan. Okay, the proposal, uh, would increase the second freestanding sign to, uh, approximately 261 square feet, um, at a height of just over 30 feet. Uh, this is part of a, um, it's my understanding, uh, the applicant can go into this a little more detail, um, but uh, it is consistent, uh, this proposal is with, uh, other signage, uh, that they, that they have at, uh, um, other medical facilities that they have across, um, across the region. These are examples of, uh, some of these boards in, uh, uh, different applications, slightly, slightly different versions, uh, with the, uh, with the message board lit and unlit. Showing that signage. And then they have submitted some, some details of, of some, some possible uses of those signs. In our preliminary discussions, uh, the applicant did say that they were willing to work with township, uh, as far as, uh, as far as typical rotation periods, um, so that, that's certainly something that, uh, that could be discussed. With that being said, applicant's proposed replacement sign is well in excess of permitted, uh, standards uh, and signs previously approved in prior PUD approval. A variance will be required for increase in total sign area. Should the zoning commission recommend approval to the board trustee, staff makes following suggestions for conditions. One, site should not be utilized for telecommunication towers in the future. Two, site shall not be used for off-site advertising signs in the future. Uh, three, a variance shall be granted for building signage and count as part of this PUD approval. Zoning Commission shall make a recommendation for total number, maximum area of signage appropriate for approval. And four, all provisions, chapter 13 shall remain in effect, and that should say unless otherwise, uh, unless otherwise stipulated. Tyler, anything else? Uh, that's all I have, uh, pertinent to this case, unless there's any questions for me. I do see a number of representatives from, uh, from this request in the crowd.
Yes, sir. The message board on there, how often will that change?
Well, uh, so there was some discussion. I think, I think that's, uh, uh, a fluid conversation that we could have. It could be as much as every minute, uh, every hour. It's, it's certainly something we can discuss with the applicant tonight. I think that's a, um, one of the, one of the things that I wanted to nail down with commission tonight is, uh, if this is recommended for approval, what, what would that interval be?
Can you address how the message board relates to your, um, flashing signs?
Uh, so there is, so what we don't allow for is, is movement. So, you know, if you have, you know, essentially a TV screen that has, that has movement along, there's certainly a concern that that would be a, um, um, a traffic hazard, you know, something to distract a driver. Um, static boards with, you know, that don't have any type of, of, of movement in their transition. You know, we don't want to see like the transitions between, um, you know, PowerPoint slides or something like that where it's, you know, it's being wiped off the board, something else being put back or some kind of cascade effect. If it's just a static movement, um, it really doesn't apply in, in the, uh, in code.
Okay, any other questions, comments for Mr. Miller?
Question, the top part of the sign, will that be lighted?
I believe it does say it's internally lit. Let me double check that. Yep. For our copy, internal, internal LED illumination. So that would glow.
Is there a photometric limitation on that?
So, uh, there's, we don't actually require a photometric plan for this, but we do, uh, specify in, in code that, uh, at the face, it cannot be, have a higher intensity than 50-foot candles at the face of the sign. So if we stick a, we stick a measurement tool right up to the face of it, 50-foot candles is the maximum.
Anything further?
The current sign that's there is the maximum allowed by code.
So the reason I say it's the maximum allowed by code is because that, it, it is the sign that is, that is permital, uh, that is permissible by the original PUD. Anything in excess of that, that existing sign, um, is, requires this major adjustment.
But what is the size of the existing size? It's more than 64 square feet, isn't it?
Uh, it's, it's 10 feet tall. I believe it's, I, I believe it's close. It's going to be, if I had to estimate, I'd say about 80 feet, 80 square feet.
Okay, anything else? Okay, if anyone's here for the, for the applicant, if you would come up to the desk, give us your name and your affiliation.
Good evening. My name is Steve Monback. I'm a senior vice president with Tri Health. Uh, we certainly have appreciated our relationship with Sycamore Township. Uh, we have a very, uh, thriving MOB on, uh, Galbraith Road and, uh, the key, uh, mission of our system is really to get health messages out there and we've realized we have an opportunity with this sign to message the community, especially coming out of COVID, where there was so much confusion in the community, giving certain messages for health, for wellness, it certainly would be a benefit to the community. To answer some of your questions, message can change. We can do it every minute, every 10 minutes. I mean, that can be very easy to program. There will be nothing flashing or driving distractions. You're very sensitive to that. So, um, I think you said it best, Skylar, it's, uh, it's a static, it looks like you change these boards, a static change. Um, sometimes we leave the messages up for a period of time, so we don't even change them. But we do change the message every once in a while and, um, it's internal LED, so it will light at all times. So a current sign has some backlighting also, and we would take down, I don't know if this was mentioned, but we would take down the current sign that's there and then replace it with this, so we're not adding a sign, we're really replacing it, but it is a larger sign with a message board.
Okay, anything else?
Uh, I think that's it. Lyle.
Yeah, Stiles. Uh, Lyle Stiles, I'm with, uh, Christian Wakefield, that's senior construction project manager. I helped put the package together. Again, it's, uh, primarily about the, the message board, uh, getting the message out to the community for the services in the, in the facility and making, uh, sure the awareness is out there.
Why, why was that height, um, chosen?
Well, well, in part, the size of the sign is driven by the size of the message board, um, but then also, uh, with the, um, the Tri Health up at the top. Again, you know, we want it to be seen from afar, so when you're approaching the sign, you're aware of the sign and then you can look and dial into the specific message that might be on the message board.
That you're currently, the sign, I mean, is there and people have found Tri Health. I mean, you can't mistake the building either for that matter.
Right, but, uh, you know, there are several, um, uh, different practices within the building, some of the services and the services change with the season, uh, flu season or COVID season or what have you, so it's just a matter of trying to make sure that the community is always aware of what's changing in the facility as far as the services that are being provided.
Or new physicians that could be there also.
Yeah.
Any other questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience who wishes to speak on this application? Okay, sorry, nothing. Anyone care to make a motion with regard to this particular application?
I have a question first.
Okay.
Um, Skylar, what is the difference between this proposed sign and an off-site advertising sign?
Specifically what is advertising. This is, this is on. Specifically, what is advertising? This is this is onsite advertising. It is it is specifically promoting the the use of of that's already on the site. So if this were, you know, if the message board were to you know, were were to promote you know, co-hatch opening at the at the town center or, you know, the Apple Store, that would that would be a billboard. That would be off-site advertising, which which would not be permitted in any way. So so they would be restricted to promotion of of, you know, their own operation.
Does our code permit for the digital type of sign unless it unless it's flashing?
It's been, it has been interpreted in the past to to prohibit those. It is an interpretation. There's there's nothing in the code that specifically says no LED signs. So I know they haven't been fair.
I recall discussing in regard to something at the mall and messaging.
Well, to get things rolling, I will make a motion.
Motion.
I move that we consider case two thousand twenty-two dash zero four M A.
Me second. Any further discussion or comments?
It seems way too large to me, number one, given this, the one that's there, I think functions pretty well. I could see some change in height if they really wanted it, but to thirty, it seems extreme. And I personally am not too keen on messaging along the highway. It's hard enough to read these signs when you're going down the highway and and they're saying something of concern to be on the lookout for someone, but it's a concern to me.
I would personally have the same concern too. The building's right at the highway. The building has signage on it. There's already a sign that's been approved with the PUD, the the existing sign. I do have concerns about messaging at, you know, sixty-five miles an hour, trying to read. We have plenty of businesses that have messaging that might be useful to them in addition to just the name of their business or the name of their their store. So I don't know why this would be unique, that the message board would be something that we should make an exception for in this case.
No one else? From my standpoint, I would agree with both of those comments. I think the sign in and of itself is is too large along the highway. Doesn't need to be that big. Bothered by the messaging. Quite frankly, I drive past this building twice a day. I have no trouble seeing the sign on the top of the building. And I know exactly where the Try Health building is. And quite frankly, this is not an emergency location. It's it's physician offices that people make appointments to go to. And they shouldn't have any trouble finding the street address or without looking for a sign on the highway. I just think the sign is too big, but I especially do not like the idea of the lighted messaging on on the board. I'd be willing to consider a smaller monument sign that's perhaps a little bit larger than what's there, but quite frankly, I think it's completely unnecessary for this building. The applicant may disagree with that, but as I said, there's already a large sign in a large building that anyone driving on the highway can see and know that that's a Try Health building. So with that said, unless there's any other comments, we would take a vote on this particular motion. Mr. Mason?
Mr. Swanson? Hi. Ms. Flynn again.
Hey.
Mr. Friedman.
No.
Mr. Ruse.
No.
And I'm voting no as well.
Okay, again, this counts for the trustees' direction.
Yes, sir. I anticipate an April fifth review by in a public hearing.
Okay, gentlemen, thank you. We'll move on to the this case on our agenda, which is case number twenty-two dash zero five P two. The applicant is Brian T. Caswell, Equipment Depot. The property is located at eight nine eight zero Ross Ash Road, and it's a PUD two. Miller, if you can give us an update on that?
Yes, sir. Okay. Again, as stated, case number twenty-two dash zero five P two. This, as you know, it's kind of the theme for the night. This is an existing business user, business in our in our community. This is for Equipment Depot, who is looking to do some significant renovations and modernization of their site. Let's see, two, this is actually multiple parcels, both along Ross Plain as well as Rose Ash. So to the north, we actually have the municipal limits. That is blue, the Blue Ash South District, which is a an industrial type district. To the south, we have more of the light industrial district, which is the underlying zone for for this property as well. To the east, we have B Residential. And to the west, actually, let's see here. I think we have that backwards. I apologize. So we actually have light industrial over on the east side. And then to the west, we have, we have B Residential as you go further that way. As you get closer and closer to excuse me, Plainfield. Okay, so again, the applicant is proposing interior and exterior building improvements. Site modifications is an upgrade to their existing facilities. They're looking to present a more consistent appearance and function in line with company objectives and essentially make the site more usable for them moving into the future. Okay, here we have the survey showing the existing site. You can see that there is primary office building here with, I believe there's a storage facility here, another building here in gray, and then to the far east of the site, you have another other large large building. You can see this is actually broken up into multiple parcels. The the renovations that they're proposing has significant demolition plans where they would be removing these these two middle buildings and then adding in addition to the to this, to this western building. So the addition would be over here. I believe they're incorporating a, is that a new loading dock? And there would also be some additional additional parking and access drive along the 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 south and east side of this of this site. Okay, the actual lot would be a mix of both both asphalt and gravel. There is a significant gravel yard central on the site. While generally flat, there is, there would be some some grading to provide for some some drainage that that the existing site is currently dealing with, as well as the incorporation of a of new underground detention. I'll I'll get to the, I'll show you some of the building elevations, but essentially there there are a couple deficiencies in in the smittle, which for for a light industrial user, I kind of I kind of see that where they were going with this. There, there's not going to be any standalone lighting. The lighting on this site, I believe, was proposed as there's there's going to be fixtures on these buildings. So we have requested a photometric plan, which which the applicant is going to be providing. And we've also requested the incorporation of a landscaping plan. The the existing site, as well as their improvements, really don't provide for a landscaping buffer along the the southern property line, nor really along the along this east boundary. However, there is significant vegetation on this side. And we're looking at pretty, pretty tight setbacks with these existing buildings. So essentially the landscaping would be landscaping the backs of of adjacent properties, buildings.
About the landscape on the west side?
What's that?
What about the landscape on the west?
Landscaping on the west. So that's the one thing. So we are requesting the the landscaping be submitted essentially for these streetscapes. So both on Ross Ash as well as Ross Plain. So if if zoning commission is agreeable, we could set that as a condition to be submitted prior to and for review by by the board of trustees prior to prior to final approval.
Do you have images of the current business?
Okay, we can move that around if you'd like. There were no new proposed signs as as part of this plan. So unless something, unless there's an additional wall signage or or monument signs, we would just hold them to the to the standard sign requirements of the of the zoning resolution as well. Okay. Let's see, Sycamore Township Fire Department did review this. It's still under review. No major concerns as far as access or either hydrant access or fire safety. Road department, excuse me, maintenance department reviewed this with with additionally no concerns. Okay. All county, all county comments were were standard typical, either under review or specifying what what permitting requirements there would be for earthmoving and soil pollution prevention.
So do you have images of the with the proposed buildings?
Yeah, I will.
Sorry, I had a little problem with my printer at home, so.
No, no, you're good.
Skylar, what's the property? Go back to that slide, back to that one slide, on the right hand side with this. Whatever that is.
What is this? This over here?
To the right.
Yeah, there is. There is another business over here, and those are those are actual
Containers?
Trailer, the trucking, trucking containers, trucking trailers.
So the fact that there's not going to be any landscape, there's not going to be a big.
I'm I'm not concerned about there. My honestly, from a landscaping perspective, the only consideration that I was looking for was that that streetscape along both Rose Ash and Ross Plain.
Does that not exist right now?
Yeah, and that's it's older, more mature trees. So along, this is this is at the corner of of Ross Ash and Ross Plain. So you can see going southbound, there is some landscaping along the along the buildings, mature trees as well. If we move further down, Ross Plain, same thing. You do have some older mature trees and shrubs, so.
So the now, the building that we're seeing there now, all of that stays.
That's my understanding, yes, sir.
Cause your building that's coming down.
So.
Two buildings.
Yeah, they're they're the more central. Actually, I think. So you're looking at some buildings back in here.
Could you go back to that overhead view that you had of the existing buildings there?
Yes, sir. Yeah.
So no, I was looking for the actual, there was a photo, an overhead.
So. Absolutely. There we go.
So the building to the left Ross Ash stays.
Yeah, so.
It already has.
This building's.
Facts out on the street.
That building staying.
This building stays. These these two are being raised. There's an addition that's being built out. You know, kind of from the south end of this, so it's going to be like an L shape. We're going to incorporate a loading dock. And then this building also stays, but there's going to be, there's going to be drive access to the south and to the to the east of it with with some additional parking. Yeah, now there's there's some natural, or excuse me, there's some, there's some drainage through here that's going to be managed underground now. And this lot is going to kind of be consolidated, but be a mix of of both asphalt and gravel.
I was I was trying to figure out what the the structure was just above where it says contemporary cannes of trees. And I think that's just a roof that's in bad shape.
It is, yes. Yeah. I I'm not even sure, does that, does that even have walls or is it just more of a of a roof shelter?
It does have walls.
It does have, okay, yeah, there you go. So there you go. There it is.
Okay, anything else for Mr. Miller?
I saw my staff comments.
Okay.
Correct. So ju- just in summary, this project is an opportunity to update and modernize an existing business property for a longstanding member of the Sycamore Township business community. Staff is generally favorable to the proposed PV, provided the commission considers the following conditions. One, existing lot shall be consolidated prior to zoning compliance plan approval. Two, site shall not be utilized for telecommunication towers in the future. Three, site shall not be used for off-site advertising signs in the future. Four, a variant shall be granted for building setback as part of the PUD two approval. I should go into a little detail on that. So the new additions, there there's there's no concern of setback on that. The two existing buildings, while meeting side and rear setbacks, actually do encroach into the existing front yard setback along Ross Plain. So the just the the front of this building along the this this western corner, that encroaches as well as the existing building on the east side. So all we're doing is documenting an existing non-conforming situation on the property. No, no concerns. Well, let's see here. Five, all site signage shall comply with chapter thirteen and Sycamore Township zoning resolution. I would just stipulate that in lieu of requiring a signed package be submitted, that's up to the applicant. Number six, photometric plan shall be submitted consistent with Sycamore Township zoning resolution prior to board of trustee review as part of the PUD to approval. That is where we stipulate that at the property lines, there should be no excessive spillover in excess of of point five foot candles at the property line. And then finally, seven, a landscaping plan shall be submitted consistent with Sycamore Township zoning resolution prior to board of trustee approval, excuse me, review as part of the PUD to approval. And I've already kind of stipulated, as far as the the south side of the property and the east side of the property, I'm not necessarily recommending they modify their their site layout to accommodate, you know, buffer boundaries there. It's it's more streetscape details that that. I'm most concerned with unless there's, unless there's a need determined by, by the commission. That's all I have.
Okay. Any questions or comments for Mr. Millen? Okay, if anyone is here for the applicant, if you would come up, the desk, give us your name and your affiliation, whatever you wish to say.
Hello, my name is Wayne McMillan. I'm with the Oswald Company, construction manager for the project. A couple things that, one thing, the truck dock that's on Ross Ash is, is actually existing. It's being improved because there's currently an issue with trucks that place air, block the road. So it's going to be moved inboard to, to help the maintain traffic flow there. I think we're, you know, open to the, the landscaping plans and, and guidelines there on the, on, on the streetscape side. There is probably a request for the consolidation plan to be considered. I think there's currently five parcels, one of which lies solely on the, the old bars manufacturing building, which is the far right. And the other four are on the parcel where the, the new building is being added on to. Just for future flexibility, some, some flexibility on the consolidation plan there.
Would. So you're saying there would still be multiple lots?
I think, you know, speaking with the owner, the far building sits on its own parcel. Okay. Maybe looking at a consolidation of the other four or some kind of conveyance of those lots.
Okay, but there wouldn't be any setback issues with the new addition?
No.
Okay, then I would be fine with that.
Okay. That's all I have. Answered any questions?
This may not be the right question for you, but I mean, can you just address what type of trucking activities are going on?
Actually, the owner's reps here, so.
Jason Watson here with Equipment Depot. The trucking traffic that will be coming through there is typical what we've had over the past thirty to forty years. It's just flat beds that carry our, you know, come in and pick up a forklift if there's customer breakdown or take a new product out to the, to the customer, or if we have a rental unit that's going out to other customers. So it's typical with what's been back there already.
And it's the twenty-four hours operation?
No, we're on seven to five-ish, somewhere around there.
Any other questions?
So we didn't, do you have more elevations than these here? We didn't really look at the floor.
I apologize. No, I think there was just, there was one detail for each of the new buildings showing some modern landscaping, but, but not, not really detailing it out. I do, I do have some floor plans for the buildings if, if that comes up in conversation, but, but these are the only elevations I have.
Gotcha. Is, is this toleration that we're looking at right now or the rendering? On the existing building that's at the corner of Ross Plain and Ross Ash?
I think that's the fact. Yes, the far, the far east building. This would be. Yep.
Yeah.
That's the corner building.
So are you re-scanning the existing, some, some of its brick currently?
Yeah, we're, we're painting and then upgrading the, the, in vestibule area where it looks a lot better.
And what, what is the blue material? Is it metal or?
It's, we're using metal on that, right?
It's metal panel.
Metal panel is the blue.
And then the rest of the building that's existing, we're just painting it once there, but at the entries, both these blue projections, those are both new facade, basically an accent blue.
And the white, the whites that is there, they're shown in the drawings.
Yes.
Is painting of the existing brick or whatever the existing material is.
That's correct.
Sir, if you don't mind, if you could just give us your name. Thank you. Anything else?
No, the other, one of the elevations, you know, Skyler mentioned that signage before, but the one rendering does show some signage. So that'd be coming in under a different application that would just have a zoning code that's of the intention.
Yes, sir.
Then one other question. There's a mix of, you mentioned gravel in the parking lot is, is keeping part gravel and part pavement just a cost-saving mechanism or is there a reason?
Yeah, the, the heaviness of the equipment that we have out there, it tends to, tends to need to tear up the concrete. So we're using every grade as far as the gravel goes. It's a lot better for our equipment.
Anything else? Thanks, sir. Appreciate it. Anyone else?
Mayor McConnell, I'm the civil designer of record for this site. And it seems like we've kind of covered the, all of the other topics. If you want to ask some questions about any of the stuff with the gravel and the setback. So also the road that's going around to the east is giving the fire department a little extra real estate back there for building access. So that's a safety. There was a safety purpose behind that. We got to get a little bit of parking in there with it too. So that was a, a, a component of that driveway. And then the landscaping buffer. So out in the front, there's some, some road right of way that we have to maintain. So we're going to work around the roadway elements. They're already there trying not interrupt what's in the right of way, but the rest of it for regrading is coming out. We work with Sycamore Township and Blushes a lot. So just want to have a landscape architect give us planting diagrams and the preferences that we know that you want for what's going out front. And then we are doing a little bit of disruption on the west side for the landscaping that's going over there too. So you'll see a, you know, kind of a those are old growth trees or a little larger, but you'll see a replacement, you know, in likeness for the landscaping that's going over there. So.
Mr. McConnell, can you speak to the water detention too? Is it, is it?
Sure, there's, yeah. So with the stone in place out front, that actually helps with our water quality and there's void space inside of the stone. So it's holding a little bit of helping us hold a little bit of water, which is a, it's, it's good environmentally. Hamilton County appreciates it whenever we're not paving. So that was a good, um, it was an added benefit. They needed the gravel there anyway. And then the ADS structure, so I call them a Barracuda system. It's just a water quality system. So to make sure that everything that's coming out into the municipal system has passed Hamilton County's water quality standard requirements for that, that product.
What, what actually gets parked on the gravel lot?
I think it's the heavy, the equipment that, that's not the vehicles or the people who work in the building. It's the equipment that's held on site. It's inside of an enclosed fenced area.
So is that actually a design like bio retention basin or is it just, is it just ground, does it just drain into groundwater?
So one of the benefits of that is that you'll get some reinfiltration on the site, which is Hamilton County's first preference, right? So that it, the void space holds the storm water. And then we kind of calculate like how long it's going to hold that water. So we use like minimum of forty-eight hours or maximum of seventy-two hours, right? So if it's in that amount of time, it has to go back into the ground or move over to the system because this type of water quality structure is open in the bottom. The water coming in from the rest of the site can also reinfiltrate in that amount of time. And then if we have a big storm, it gets cleaned and then outlet into the municipal system. So it's an opportunity for it to go back on site before it leaves.
So is there some, is, is there some kind of pollution filtration?
Yes, yep. So there is an O and M that goes along with that. And then they have to check it every, it's like an annual. And then every five years they come and pull the, the thing open and make sure that there isn't anything in there that's inhibiting what the product is supposed to do. So we use them all over. It's required everywhere now and they pretty effective. So confident about that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Anyone care to make a motion on this application?
Sure. My number. I move, we consider case twenty twenty-two dash zero five P two.
In a second. Any further comments or suggestions?
Oh, yes. Drop the ball there. Sorry. Now, always happy to see a business in the community being successful and having a need to expand. So looks like you're doing a lot of things to really dress up the place. You're asking comments from my boat or? No, I think it looks really nice. I think it's a great improvement.
I think it looks nice too. I still am wondering about that language in item three, whether we need to include billboard slash offsite. Because to me, the last time I heard Skyler, when he says offsite, he's talking about a different business, but what would prevent that business?
So, so, so office, so, excuse me, I keep, I apologize. I kept saying Office Depot and I bothered. Equipment Depot. So Equipment Depot couldn't build a billboard sized sign for, you know, for Equipment Depot. There's, there's already provisions in the code that limit the size of our signage. And you're talking about, you know, a hundred and fifty square feet of, of signage per building. You're looking at, you know, a, a maximum of a hundred square foot. You know, freestanding monument sign. So there's, there's no, there's no allowance for, for a billboard type structure. So however, if you, you know, this, this area could allow for an actual billboard for offsite advertising. This provision put into a PUD would prohibit that in the future. And I, and again, I, I stress, I use the term offsite ever, or what I, what I say, offsite advertising signs, because our code does not use the term billboard. So I'm, I'm just trying to be consistent.
Satisfied with that. I think it could be a little more clear, but I'm satisfied the way.
Nothing further.
Mr. Swanson?
I mean, yes.
It's Flanagan?
Yes.
Mr. Friedman?
Yes.
Mr. Roos?
Very good. Thank you all for coming in and participating this evening. And I believe this also will go to the trustees for their.
Yes, sir. I anticipate April fifth.
Thank you.
We'll, we'll be in touch to, to discuss details and talk about the, the additional metals. So look forward to working with you. Thank you.
Okay. Next item. The township trustees have anything they want to advise us about?
Well, other than, I guess, a happy late New Year. Been a while since we've met. I will say that this, this group is still more active than our BZA. I, I don't think they've met in the last year. Yeah, it's, it's close, isn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah, so. Yeah, so. Yeah. As always, our, our staff and our, our board of trustees appreciate your, as support and diligence. I will say that the, the land use plan, as well as those tax amendments were approved at the beginning of this year in January by the board.
Without a definition for billboard, apparently.
We have a definition. We have, we have, we have this, this legally defensible definition of an outside. Yeah, so. Yeah, well, that's something we can, yeah, we can, we can certainly address that in the future. But yeah, it's a, I'm still waiting for formal review by Rural Planning Commission for the land use plan and also updates on, on their, their ongoing project for that, that unified, you know, model code. So still, still working with them on that.
The Drake property, anything new on that?
So that property is, the Drake and Carousel are both now owned by, owned by the court. They have, they have done a really good job of securing the site, boarding it up. They have, they're working with Sheriff's Department who's doing weekly, you know, checks on the site. We've been fortunate. There hasn't been any additional break-ins or fires or anything like that. Site stands secure. They just finished the asbestos, asbestos abatement review. It's going to cost significantly more than what they anticipated. As a matter of fact, they had a demo budget and the asbestos alone exceeds what they had for demo. So they're, they're going out for additional funding for that. The goal is still to tear everything down. So.
Do they have a demo contract?
They do, well, they don't because of the funding situation. So there's a, no, they have a one point three million dollar asbestos remediation project ahead of them.
Is that a township problem or a poor problem?
That's a poor problem. Yeah, it's, it's their, it's their cost to save. There, there are funding sources for them. They're going out for grants. It just takes time to, to, you know, jump through the hoops, do the paperwork. It's a little, we were hoping that, you know, when no one had gotten ice, they would be, they'd be tearing down the building. So I'm still hopeful it'll happen, you know, later this summer. You know, I think there, no, this, this definitely pushed them back several months. Let's see, other than that, we will be going back for, for round two on the, on the land use plan. There were some marching orders from, from both zoning commission and board of trustees as far as, you know, second phase revisions to, to our, our new document. So we have two vacancies on that board. So if you guys know anyone that's interested in, you know, being a part of that, that initial process, by all means, pass, pass the word around. So that just went out in the, the recent newsletter. Does that hit your guys' mailboxes yet? You, you did? Okay. Well, keep your eyes peeled. You should have a newsletter in your mailbox very soon. Okay, so that's all I have.
Thank you. Looks like our next meeting is Monday, April the eleventh. Anything submitted yet?
We're close. There's, there's a, there's a smittle that might be coming. So when's the deadline? Yeah, eighteenth. Okay, we, we might have a, we might have another smittle. So not, not a whole lot of detail on it just yet, but yeah, we're getting there. Okay. Well, yeah, I was gonna say, yeah, thanks. You guys average, you guys average less than half an hour.
You want to stay a little?
I've, I've talked enough tonight.
Okay. Entertain a motion to adjourn. Second by.
Second.
Second all over.